I'd like to call for motion to come out of executive session. It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Pose your abstaining. Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to call for the saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Turn over the superintendent for presentations.
Great, thank you. First, I'd like to, I'm looking around, Mr. Kramer. There he is. There he is. If you could please stand for a moment. It's my great pleasure tonight to share with you one of our many teachers who believes that lifelong learning is critical to his success and the success of his students. This passionate teacher has dedicated his time and his energy to becoming part of the cohort cohort for master teachers in New York State and as part of the New York State Master Teacher Program. I just want to mention a couple of things. I've had the distinct pleasure of working very closely with Mr. Kramer with our Eco Campus Project. He absolutely lives his field. He loves the environmental science world. It shows his kids certainly benefit from that. And we just wanted to take a moment to recognize Mr. Kramer tonight here for being a lifelong learner and being a member of the next cohort for the Master Teacher Program. Thank you. Next, and I think it's why most people are in attendance here tonight. It just says so much about the incredible fall sports season that we have this year. The number of students who are lined up in our hallways and little classrooms waiting to come in here. So it's my pleasure to turn this over to Mr. McKenna, who is going to be our master ceremonies for the many recognitions that we'll be going through tonight with regard to our very successful athletic program.
Mr. LaNas, taking Board of Education. Mr. LaNas said we want to recognize any of our fall student athletes for many reasons. They belong to Niagara Frontier League Champions. They're scholar athletes, sportsmanship, a number of awards that our fall student athletes achieved throughout this past season. We're obviously thrilled to have any of them here today in attendance. For in particular teams, several other sportsmanship award winners, excuse me, as well as scholar athletes. So we're going to get started with that. But while I just had here the tension, I just we got two tremendous awards that I just want to allude to. Well, I have the platform. The Niagara Pales Sports Award Dinner is an annual award ceremony for all the Niagara County schools as well as a couple of schools in Niagara Frontier League, which is near Collin, like Red Alley, Kevlar, so forth. It's a very prestigious dinner. And I just want to give a quick congratulations to two award winners. The very prestigious, probably the most prestigious award for the Niagara Pales League Sports Dinner is the Bob Fett Award, and that goes to an individual who has made outstanding contributions to athletics. And that's going to be received. The award goes to Mr. El Pogo, one of our own coaches and teachers. So we're excited about that. And then also the Father Jerry Barco Award. Many of you have participated in athletics around this area for quite for the last 50 years. You know who Jerry Barco was. He was a pastor in the area, but also a longtime official. And he had passed away recently. And they had this first time award for an individual or coach or official that exemplifies his values of compassion, fairness, diversity, inclusion, and quality of sportsmanship. And that first time award is going to be going to our very own Gary Jackson, who is our varsity, varsity, excuse me, varsity girls basketball coach. So congratulations to those two. I just want to make this quick announcement. We're honored to announce first, you know, our boys and girls cross country team. They'll be coming in here in a moment. And we'll be reading off some of the names of those individuals. Who have achieved an Niagara Frontier League championship for both boys and girls. I want to recognize all of them. While we're doing that, a couple of individuals that we want to recognize as well with this group that is which have done a tremendous job in their achievements. Is Miranda Gatto, Miranda fortunate couldn't be here today. Let me just say a few things about Miranda. She's actually at a, she's at the St. Bonaventure University, looking at that college for cross country. And she's got doing a little scouting over there to see if she wants to attend there. So she's doing a little trip over there today. She shouldn't be here. But it's just amazing to see what she's accomplished. First team, first of all, all week. New York State Champion in the qualifier, 43rd in the state, fourth in the section. New York State Federation, New York State Federation, repeat that qualifier. Now, that's, that's the best. That's not only public, that's Catholic, every single school, district in New York State, 55th overall. New Year, Nike Cross Regional Qualifier, she finished 14th, 14th. Yeah, and that's everyone.
Scholar athlete, runner-up of the athlete of the week and second team all West New York. So unbelievable accomplishments by Miranda Gatto, one of our very own. Congratulations to Amanda. We also have Vincent Cirillo and Hayden Geibl, their NFL Sportsmanship Award winners. We congratulate them as well. That's a great achievement, not only with their academic success, their athletic success, they're good kids as well, and that's most important. So at this time, I'm going to announce the wonderful ladies and gentlemen to my right. We'll announce small, folks, if you just give a little wave when I say your name, that'd be terrific. They already received their certifications, certifications, their certificates. At the end, what we'll do is we'll just kind of cross right in front of me, give a little wave. I know we don't want to shake hands, give a little wave and show your appreciation. Okay. Olivia Barbosa Robinson, Alexis Bissell, Tegan Brady, Melissa Cato, Jillian Davies, Miranda Gatto, Hayden Geibl, Atlanta Goldman, Luella Johnson, Isabella Kopka, Christine May, Elaine Raglo DeFranco, Amanda Snowberger, Kendall Sobsec, and Morgan Videm. Folks, congratulations.
How many, how many members of the team do we have this year doing now?
Total members from the boys and girls team. I think we were at, what were we at? Coach Hess, probably close to, oh, he's outside. Yeah, I would say, yeah, sorry, close to 50, 40, 50.
I just want to thank all of you for your participation and being engaged in this sport. I've heard from people, when our cross country team shows up, they'll say, who is that getting off those two buses? And it's very unique to have this many students in a program. And it says so much about the kids who are in the program, but also about the coaches who are running the program. So congratulations to all of you for making it a program that so many people want to be a part of. Thank you.
That's good. Congratulations. Nice job. Nice job. One of the boys and girls are parading through. Just, just one comment. Coach Smith, I want to say a few words about her as well. Unfortunately, unfortunately, she is with Miranda right now on that trip to St. Bonaventure, you know, helping Miranda out with her choices on what the next level will look like. And but Coach Smith had a wonderful honor as well. She's Section Six Sportsmanship Award winner for cross country. Again, that's not the league, that's the whole section. So congratulations again to Coach Smith. And she does a tremendous job with their program. Surely does. She, you know, she takes on the, the boys and the girls. So we really, we really appreciate her efforts. So we thank girls. Now for the boys cross country team. We'll jump back to them. And we'll announce some of the gentlemen that are here today. For boys cross country, we have Andrew Barrett, Tieran and Brady, Vincent Cirillo, Christopher Desiderio, Michael Foley, Josh Carvix, Jackson James, Evan Jones, Leon O'Donnell, Aaron Shaner, Cameron Thomas, Porter Thumann, and Lucas Tyloc. Congratulations, gentlemen. And again, great work by Vincent and Hayden, NFL Sportsmanship Award winners. Great job. And next up, we have our boys varsity soccer team as they start entering. Of course, the boys varsity soccer, obviously Niagara Frontier League Champions as well. Had a tremendous season led by Coach Calder, who's leading the troops in. So again, we appreciate those that came out today. A good contingent of gentlemen, good-looking gentlemen at there. All dressed up today. Great season by the team. Wonderful to see, as I said, it's fun watching these guys, these gentlemen grow up. One of the first groups I, I seen for a long time, they had some great success coming up. Been able to experience a regional event a couple of years back, and a lot of them were part of that whole thing. So it's great to see how much they, you know, have grown and many of them are going on to great things in the future. So starting off, again, a little quick wave that I want you to do, guys, and we'll step forward maybe when I read off your name. The star of Ryan Bergstrom, Hayden Brower, Lucas Serino, Zach Clement, Ryan DeValle, Vincent DiBello, Dante DiFilia, Clyde DePalma, Jacob Franceso, Cameron Grzadek, Troy Hassan, Jonathan Higgins, Jack Johnson, Evan Kopp, Evan Osatowski, Simon Pollak, Michael Rimboli, Jacob Romanow, Noah Sass, Max Schroder, Aiden Sifford, Connor West. Awesome job, gentlemen. Thank you. As you can just come right through around in here, say a little quick thank you. And then grab some cookies on your way out. Great job again to the boys soccer team. Next, another NFL championship, as I said, this continues, which was great. This next team again had a tremendous season. Not only were they Niagara Frontier League Champions, won the section, regional championship, and also were state finalists. A tremendous, tremendous run by our girls volleyball team. What's special about this team, you know, we were here just not too long ago, right? We did here not too long ago. They were in the same position a couple of years ago on this stage, you know, as, as state finalists. They realize, we all realize, if you don't, how challenging it is to even win a section, let alone a region, which is filled with volleyball players in West New York and Central New York. And to be able to go compete at an elite level against the whole state, which is very enriched in volleyball, girls volleyball in the New York area. So congratulations again to our volleyball team for representing not only us, our section, and our region at the state competition a few months back. The girls are pleased, and we only, we'll have three here, so we'll, we'll announce them first. Alana Leeschek, Lindsey Tyloc, and Sasha Zats. Congratulations, girls. Also on the team was Chris, Chris, excuse me, Chrisa Basell, Antonica Durenzio, Allison Felling, Sunshine Free Line, Brianna Jones, Emily Kachala, Julia Quichov, Jenna Piper, Marla Piper, Emily Quater, Kelsey Tyloc, and Kelsey Tac, that was the last thing I mentioned. Congratulations, girls. Thanks for being here.
I know I wasn't alone. I'm sure a lot of people were viewing your run from home through the live stream. And I will tell you, I don't know if there's a sport, by the way, that livestreams better. And the announcers, even though it was a home match for Rochester, seemed very in favor of your team. Great announcing. So the announcing was great. And watching it that way, certainly something for the future, I think. With people who love volleyball on livestream, it just, it just plays very well. So, great job.
Yeah, girls, come just right around in here. Just give a quick wave. We're not going to shake hands and grab some cookies on your way out in some. We do have the power push. Yep, this way. Thanks, guys. I really appreciate it. Speaking, speaking of that live stream, I do apologize that they came. I think I was sitting right next to the cameraman. And I think I was on more than, more than I wanted to be. So I apologize for that. But that was certainly was a cool event. The, well, the whole, you know, the whole section and regional run that they had, once again, this year was terrific. Last but certainly not least, we have our boys golf team led by Coach Cott here to my right. Again, another NFL championship, folks, they're 20 and one this year. And when we say, wow, that's unbelievable, well, that's pretty much the norm for boys golf in Niagara Wheatfield. You know, it wasn't too long ago where they rattled off 96, 97 in a row. But again, they left off where they were a couple of years ago, 20 and one again this year. Another Niagara Frontier League championship. And again, for the decade, it's probably up to at least 15 NFL championships or more. Something, can't, we lost track. So tremendous, tremendous job by our golfers. Again, Coach Cott, Coach Cott, I can't stand up about him, what a tremendous job he does. I know he gets kiddos out there that just, they want to learn the game of golf. And next thing you know, they're, they're 20 and one. And many of his kids are going on to play at a sectional level. So or even like something like last year, playing at an elite college level too. So it's terrific to see. So we have here today Quinn Brick. Thanks for coming out today. We also have on the team Roman Adamsjic, Robert Delisani, John Fike, Joshua Gleason, Evan Horasik, Joshua Kazer, Gunnar Group, Easton Lambelli, Daniel Laberty, Joseph Muni, Ashton File, Parker Phillips, Ty Reid, Brandon Reinhardt, Jacob Schultz, Brianna Skozova, Mason Strasburg, and Corey Walsitt. So great job, Coach Cott. Thanks again for coming out today. Great work. Next, this is nice that we continue to have these awards, but I'm running out of my breath here. But this is good. Girls swim. Girls some had an amazing year this year. And it was just wonderful to watch these two young ladies. Sarah is not here. Okay. The two young ones here, one's not here. Ava, Ava Pauli is here to, to my right. Sarah could not make it. But these two young ladies competed in the state competition. And at the college, had the opportunity to take a ride down there during the competition. And for them to compete at that level is amazing. And when you go into that natatorium or that swimming venue, I mean, it's like watching Olympics. It's huge. There's thousands of girls competing. And to be able to jump in and dive into that water and compete at that level is just a tremendous sight. And again, both Ava and Sarah, just, just an outstanding job for us, competed at that level. And obviously doing such a tremendous job here in our section into the region to get to that level. So Ava, thank you. Congratulations. It is also coached by Coach Kyle Lazonis and Michael Costero, who could not be here today. So great work by, by those coaches as well. Finally, but as we say, it's just important as your effort in sportsmanship and the athletic achievements, if not more important, as we say, is the academic achievements. And I want to recognize our Section Six Scholar Athletes. Just as an FYI, I don't even know if you guys know this or not, but they're going to be, for those that still have it, I know many of you don't, is the paper copy of the Buffalo News. That will be on Sunday's paper. So that will be out on Sundays with the little pictures in the back. So our six, we have six, excuse me, five scholar athletes. Dylan Clydedonis, Ryan DeValle, Kelsey Tyloc, and Morgan Videm. Dylan's from Boys Volleyball, Ryan from Boys Soccer, and Kelsey from Girls Volleyball, and Morgan from Girls Cross Country. So congratulations to those folks. Job well done in the classroom and on the playing fields. Congratulations. A little quick wave, sneak out and around and grab some cookies and drinks. Congratulations. Nice work. Okay, thank you. I truly, truly appreciate it. And I hope, and I know I will, because I've already seen the results of the winter sports season with our swimmers doing a tremendous job. And I want to get into all that, because we'll do that hopefully down the road. But and many more NFL championships, as many, some of you have watched social media that we're doing in the winter. So it's been a wonderful, wonderful winter season as well. And then if we have time, close to the very end for spring maybe as well. So thank you.
Mr. Merkin, a really quick problem to you, the families, our coaches. A huge congratulations, you know, the supremacy award is something that was, you know, won by one district for a really long time. And our athletes now are taking that trophy hard. Certainly, the leadership of you and the coaches in that program has been a lot. Some great job.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on with the consensus agenda items. Call for motion to approve the consensus agenda as submitted. It's moving seconded. Anything to separate or discuss? And then all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Pose your abstaining. Motion carries. My personnel items, like the call for motion to accept items one through 11 as submitted. Moving seconded, I'll have to separate number six. Anything else to separate? All those in favor of accepting one through five and seven through 11, please say aye. Aye. Pose your abstaining. Motion carries. Your staff?
Thank you very much. This evening, it's my honor to introduce to the Board of Education item number six. That is Whitney Worth. Whitney is right there with a little wave, and we're happy that Whitney is joining us at the high school in our clerical role there. Whitney's graduate of the Villarreal College and has been with the Whiteheads Corporation of Rochester, New York for the past three years. She's coming to us with very strong desire to work with students, work with youngsters, and work in a school setting. She definitely is a person who is an honor to sit down and interview her myself. For the final interview the other day, and we're very excited to have her start with us at the next week.
All those in favor of accepting Whitney Worth as whatever new typist at the senior high school, please say aye. Aye. Pose your abstaining. Motion carries. Congratulations and welcome to the family. All right, going on a policy committee. All right, we have a deletion of policy 5150, which is the contingency budget. All those in favor of deleting that policy, please say aye. Aye. Pose your abstaining. Motion carries. All right, also brought to us from the policy committee are the first reading of policies 5130, which is the budget adoption, 5230, the acceptance of gifts, grants, requests to the district, policy 5570, financial accountability, policy 5383, fire and emergency drills, bomb threats and bus emergency drills, policy 5730, which is NW number 5750, the school bus safety policy, policy 5740, which is the NW policy 5760, which is qualifications of bus drivers, and then policy 6140, which is employee medical exemptions. Any questions to the chair on those policies? Or the superintendent?
Just a question on qualification of bus drivers. Is there something that's changed in there?
Yeah, so good question. Two, two that I'd comment on. What is, what is that? And what's changed in both the policies that have that language is that now an individual who has had a physical eight weeks prior to consideration for hire can be counted. Where before it was four weeks, it has actually opened up the window, made it a little bit easier for us to bring people in who've already had a physical. And then the second thing that I want, and I know this wasn't the question, but the second thing that I wanted to touch on under the fire and emergency drill, bomb threats and bus emergency drills, is that now instead of it being 10 feet in front of a bus that in, students are going to be trained to walk out and cross, it's going to be 15 feet. So it's going to extend that out a little bit further, a little bit easier for the drivers to see.
All those in favor of accepting the first reading of those policies, please say aye. Aye. Pose your abstaining. Motion carries. All right, ex-official student members report?
I just wanted to say that this week should, here at week, so we can do that for the past couple of days. So it was a Western theme, so all of our classes have been, classes have been in competition with each other. So who can win the most competition can already give $100 towards their class. That has been going very well and has been a lot of fun for a lot of us hallway down there last night. Also, I would like to say I'm very thankful for the social workers that we have throughout the districts and Mrs. Jones in particular. She has been so helpful having another like, like, merchant of support throughout the school, besides the teachers, someone to go talk to and everything for those times. Even having Horizon pushing through our classes and having the other mental health services throughout the district coming through our classes. It's been very beneficial. And I hope that that continues in the future. And it's just been great having each grade have exposure to knowing what mental health is, like all the type of it. And being able to know where you're concerned throughout the district. So that has been very helpful. And the winter sports season has been very wonderful from what I've seen.
Any questions for our student member? All right, I'm going to defer my report to the superintendent.
One other good note is, as you heard, that one of the more exciting, you know, athletic awards for me is when we hear how many of our students and coaches are receiving the sportsmanship award. It's just, obviously, what we're about, we're about student first and student athlete. So that's exciting. I did want to make mention that our Erie Niagara School Superintendent's Association has now sent multiple letters to our governor asking for a very clear off-ramp to the different mitigation strategies. So we asked for that. What we've seen at this point are metrics. We don't know what numbers those metrics are attached to. So we're hoping again that there's just very clear, a very clear process for this offer. You know, we've seen this, you know, throughout the, throughout the pandemic that, you know, we'll be given some information on a Friday through a Monday. And we're hoping that that doesn't happen. So we would ask for that. Test distribution, Tom?
As you know, we were set to have a test distribution at August, February 3rd originally. There was a snow day called. We had a makeup day last Thursday. It went very well. We had a really nice participation rate. We handed out around 12 months of tests. We have our second date coming.
We have our second date coming up tomorrow. It's right outside the high school, I'll see just as a reminder, that has been sent out on Blackboard, and that along with a quick little map that can show the distribution route itself, but it's right outside the door. And we hope that everybody, you know, coming in can take full advantage of it. At the test, we have a very good supply of those tests.
Thank you. Next, you should all have in your possession two draft calendars. And I'm stressing the word draft, because if you look on the side of them, as somebody pointed out, it says in some cases it has the right year, but in others, it wasn't corrected all the way down. It's the 2223 school year. So the file of the actual calendar will come to the next board meeting. What I, what you're certainly able to act on tonight, if you'd like, is which of these two options you prefer. If there's something else, I'd certainly take it back and then we'll talk about it. What you'll see, if you remember, the joint management team calendar is built by the four BOCs, okay? And that's what this calendar is then built off of. There are, they have 188 days in their calendar. We have 187 in our calendar. So that means that we have to eliminate one of the days. And the two options that I presented here, if you notice, on the one that says option one, there is an extra day that we have in December. So if you look in the bottom left-hand corner, you'll see December 23rd would be off. So that would be the length in that break. Or if you look over at option number two, you'll see on that one, if you go to December, you'll see down left-hand corner, you'll see December 23 will be a school day. And then instead, the extra day is put at May 26, making that a four-day weekend. Okay? So I honestly have zero preference. Those are two days that seemed like they were in line with some of the things that we've done in the past. So if you want to talk under my comments here.
We'll bring it up under new business first listed.
We, I've talked a little bit about the Tuscaloosa Elementary School and some of the expected work there, and the fact that there's money in both the executive budget and in the Board of Regents budget to fix the many things in that, at that building that need to be fixed. That's really good news. We also look like we might be partnering with the NIFL for some additional work once that is finalized. Now, if you have a comment further, I will. But I want to say that there's just been a great deal of bipartisan support for helping fix that, the issues at that building. And so I'm very pleased with that. And the last thing is this, food service free until the end of the year, until June 30 of 2022, breakfast and lunches are free. We don't know what will happen for next year. There's been nothing new on the federal front or the state front.
Questions to superintendent on his report? All right, report to the board. We have an item there for finance, which is the refund for the collection of air and property tax calculations, such an informational item. So please make sure you check that over. Then we have the proposed budget development calendar. This is, we have one little amendment in there, if I remember looking at it. It was different, so make sure you just check that over also. And then we'll move on to the budget presentation.
We presented our initial bunch of presentation at the last meeting, and we're going to give out some additional details today. And one of the things that we'll talk a little bit about is the tax level limit as well. The numbers that you see in front of you are just some of the statewide numbers in New York State when it comes to spending. You see that there's a 3.1% increase in the state operating funds, and you can see that total dollar amount there. And you can see there's a 1.6 increase, this is in the executive budget, in all funds, spending total 216.339 billion. The really important part of this budget is that they've projected a balanced budget through 2027, and they've done that without the federal funds that the state's member is bringing in. So that's really important for school districts, because, you know, we're going to talk a little bit more about foundation aid soon. Had they balanced that budget with federal funds, that would then end, that would make it so that the foundation aid that is a district we count on wouldn't, and if they were filling the foundation aid with those federal funds, it would mean that there would be a gap at some point. So the good news is they've, so that they've balanced this budget till 2027 without federal funds. So that's, that's key and important. Here you can see just the proposed spending and how it's broken down. You notice, and I think it says 19% is education, so about 20% of the state budget is education. You can see that largest block there is Medicaid. Those are two significant areas for New York State. Remember, public education is something that everyone has a right to. And you can see the cost of that in New York State. The foundation aid, there's an increase of 1.6 billion. We talked about our number. It was a, it's a 4% increase. Don't look at that slide for a second, okay? Because it's complicated. Think of it this way. Right now, there's a foundation aid formula. Our district is not receiving all the funds that we should to meet that formula. So there's a gap. What New York State has said is that they're going to give us half of that gap next year and the other half the year after that. That's what all those words up there say. Okay? And what that equates to would be a foundation aid increase of approximately 4% for 2022-23, and about the same for 2023-2024. Okay?
This just talks about and just shows how the foundation aid, as it's made, as all the districts are made whole, the dollar amount that is projected to be increased to make the, all the districts whole. So in the end, you can see to the far right that that final bar there would be the endpoint where all districts would be made whole according to the foundation aid formula.
Sorry, I have one more, too. Next. Just a brief foundation aid history. The foundation aid formula, again, was set up to make sure that there was equitable funding in New York State for public schools. The foundation aid was, formula was created in 2007, but by 2009, they froze it. So they were no longer giving what they believed and what was determined to be adequate, fair, and the legal amount that they were supposed to be giving schools. Well, as a result, they kept holding back money from the districts that they were supposed to be given, giving them, and they knew they were supposed to be giving to the districts, so they had to give that a name. And that was called the gap elimination adjustment. So there was a, they were holding back funds. So over the last so many years, as many of you know, they've had to pay back that GEA. And as it stands right now, they're trying to finally close the full gap in foundation aid. And in two years, we should see that. Okay? And it's been a long time coming to get there. And it's certainly, you know, really good for us, for public education, that we're, that we're on our way to actually see that.
Well, this slide just goes through and talks again about the executive budget. And the executive budget moving forward is planning on having 15% in reserves. That will reduce the need for local levels to reserve as much. And these reserves will be used to stabilize the budget and reduce the need for things like the GEA reductions, which is also better for schools in the end. So this just shows the planned deposits, the balance at year-end, and the estimated state operating funds expenditures. This slide is a little difficult to see, but again, this goes through our, this is just to show our foundation aid formula. So for Niagara Wheatfield, our total aid due is that top number, 23,874,646. And they subtract the base that they use, they come up with a difference. So that difference is half of which is what we would have due.
So another, like I said, they owe us in essence the 1.898. They're giving us about a million dollars. They're giving us about half of that next year.
Right.
And then the year afterward, the intent is for them to give us the other half.
The other half, right. And the formula this year, I mean, I know you know, in years past, we had tried to explain it, they had the A, B, C, D, E, whichever worked out the highest. This year was much simpler. It was half of the difference of what is owed, or 3% above the foundation aid base. And whatever's higher, in our case, it's half of what is ultimately owed us. All right. This slide again talks about the full phase in amount. Now, this is for our district, Niagara Wheatfield. The full phase in amount for Niagara Wheatfield is 24,223,138. That number is a moving target, and there are several factors in the calculation, including adjusted gross income and consumer price index, which fluctuate every year. These two amounts can change and do change, and that sometimes explains the reason of the difference between the executive budget and the legislative budget. This year, the executive budget was calculated using the CPI that was in place for November 2021, which at that time was 3.3%. When the legislative budget comes out, the CPI that they're going to use is the current rate, which is 4.7%, and that will most likely calculate an increase for most districts. So because the numbers used in the calculation, again, are moving targets, so too is the foundation aid amount. And that's one of the reasons why the legislative budget is always a little higher than the executive budget.
And before you change the slide, I just wanted you to take a look at it. You just go back from 1450, right? 1907 was what we were getting, 2229, we were supposed to get it. They were fully funded. So when you look across, you can see the millions of dollars that we've been talking about this for a lot of years. We don't ever think that they're going to give us all that money back that they weren't paying, but at least the intention is to close this off and make sure that we are being fully funded. But all of you have seen over the years, we've talked about what those totals would have been. We stopped doing it. Right? But what we're showing you, like, you know, millions and millions of dollars lost had the foundation aid formula been followed.
This is our tax cap levy calculation worksheet this year. So you can see it starts out with the prior year levy, which was 34,720,519. That's multiplied by our tax-based growth factor, which is supplied to us from New York State. And then to that is added a base year pilots to come up with the total. And then that total is multiplied by the allowable levy growth factor based on CPI. Again, that's given to us by New York State. To that is added our budgeted pilots, what we expect, expect to come from next year's pilot payments, which is just over 1.7 million. And that gives us our tax levy before exclusion. So we're allowed to add in exclusions, and this year we would have capital expenditures net of aid for next year at just over 1.4 million. So that brings our tax levy limit, levy limit plus exclusions to 35,624,366, or 2.6% over prior year levy. So that's where we're at this year for our levy. Is there any questions on that before I move forward? Again, I just want to review the reserves that we have in place right now. This is as of today, these figures. So we have a workers' compensation reserve at just over 1.1 million. We have an ERS retirement reserve at 1.7 million. We have a TRS retirement reserve, which is the teachers' retirement system, at 579,000 and some dollars. We have other employee benefits, and those are benefits paid to employees upon retirement. That's just under a million dollars. We have two capital transportation reserves. We have one that's just over 1.6 million and one that's at $3 million. Those are both full. We have a 2019 capital improvements budget at 4.3 million. That is full. We have a capital technology budget at $2 million. That is full. We have an appropriated fund balance, which is money that has been appropriated to the current year budget to balance it. That's at just over 2.2 million dollars. We have our 4% unassigned fund balance, and, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped with the assigned, the assigned unappropriated fund balance there. That is the money we talked about at the end of last year that we will be putting into a capital reserve. So on the budget vote this year, there will be a proposition for a new capital reserve, and that money, that 5.9 million, will go into that reserve if the voters approve to do so. And then we have our 4% unassigned fund balance at just over 3.1 million.
Two points. The last one about the unassigned fund balance, remember that, that in essence is like our cash flow.
Correct.
And, and very often, that 4% in many years is just not enough, because we have to pay ahead of time for Tuscaloosa School. In some cases, the payment on that, as we all know, has been much better as of late. That's a really good thing. That's a number that we've been arguing for a long time, particularly for our district, that it shouldn't be just 4%. Okay? The other piece, when you look at the capital transportation reserves, remember, we use those for buses, we use those for other vehicles. One bus, how much money? An over $100,000 per bus? We have to purchase about eight of them a year, okay? To keep turning over our fleet before they run down. So, so they don't run down.
The other thing, just to make note to that, that savings account that Mr. Willance was talking about, that's also funding our Smart Schools program, because we still have not received payment for that. So that's part of the cash flow to maintain, so I don't have to borrow. We can make payroll all the time in.
We're almost going on a year.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. In March, it'll be a year.
It's 11 months. Next, fiscal stress. We talked about this last time. I just think it's always important to point that out. One point, we're the most physically stressed district in the state, and now we're, we're zero. Great job, Allison Business Office, Board of Education for doing all that work. The last item, it's interesting, this was part of, and by the way, many of these slides came from Questar, which does a lot of state aid planning in New York State. Okay? And this slide did as well. Bob brought this up the last meeting. We are not in the position where we're going to start moving to this yet. However, it's certainly potentially on the horizon. Okay? If, if these things go through, and if we, you have to get to the zero emissions and all those things, there's going to be time to turn that over. We, what we don't want to do, I don't want to do, is start putting in charging stations if at some point they're going to be setting up a situation where you can be refunded for that, where they'll pay for it. We don't want to get ahead of that. Okay? So, you know, it says state funding for charging infrastructure. That's all part of it. When that would come up, then we could start turning it over. 72?
Yeah, 72.
Well, it's a great question, right? You know, again, if they're giving you a date when you have to get to 2035, we'd have time to do it, and quite frankly, and on our timeline, doing it 80 years, we could, we could get there. But again, we wouldn't want to do anything with this until we know that those things are going to go through and that there's going to be the funding for the charging stations, because that, that won't be cheap.
No.
And what we, some other, there's a lot of unknowns, right? You know?
We don't, you know, there's a lot that still needs to be looked at. How far will a bus go on a charge? Are hybrid vehicles included? You know, are there going to be, is the infrastructure going to be in place all around so that when a bus is out dropping kids off and needs a charge, is it going to be able to pull over and charge somewhere, you know?
Because you've all, you know, on your, on your way to and from, you know, wherever you're going in the morning or the afternoon, you've seen buses parked. You've seen buses parked in, in, in lots or, or getting, gassing up in, in places. If, if those charging stations don't exist other places, the, the, the charge that the buses hold better be significant. And then, and then there's, there's also the, the question about the really the cold weather. Right? Anybody who's gone out in the winter and tried to turn over their car and the battery doesn't start, that's, that's the electric part of it.
Well, and I know because I drive a hybrid vehicle. So I can tell you, like in the winter, my battery does not charge as full as it does in the heat, heated summer months. So I get half the amount of charge that I do in the summer, which would be the same, I would assume for the buses. So.
So there's going to be a lot of proving that needs to go on before we, you know, make this kind of change. Any questions?
Notice the other item on there for finances, the set the tax levy limit. Remember, this is not, whatever we said, it's not what we, we're setting the maximum deficit. It's all the superintendent and our business officials who create a budget for it. Doesn't mean it's the maximum or, or minimum that we're. It isn't. But it's by the maximum that we're going to accept. Change that piece. This is basically, you know, what we're going to be setting as them to start creating something for us. Any discussion? Yeah.
It's accepted that calculation. You, you have an opportunity there to make decisions.
So I'll call for a motion to accept the state tax levy limit at 2.6% as per the calculation for a second. Any discussion?
Setting that tonight, does that determine somewhat how much we hone in on whether the lower or higher end of that right wing budget?
No, basically like that, I was just saying, it basically is just accepting that that calculation is what it is.
It, it says, it says that's the amount you can go to without a super majority budget. That's what it tells us. If you go over it, you have to have a super majority budget that you know is going to.
I didn't know if the doctor didn't help. Either tightly or loosely, you know, I think 02 to 2.6.
Simply just showing us that the calculation was presented to the board, that we accepted that the calculation was appropriate and given forward. All those in favor then of accepting the calculation, please say aye.
Aye.
Those abstaining, which carries. Any support discussion? Any bold business? New business. We have the district calendar discussion. Mr. Coyne, two plus. I did, I did last.
Hey, Dan, I mean, I like which direction Steve's going. But not putting Mr. Coyne on the spot. This is only a preliminary calendar. Can't we, can't you, I mean, we make, I had the decisions up here. Reach out to the union presidents and for some type of thought process, as you know, as quickly as they can.
So it is actually in the, it's, it's in the contract with the N, N WTA that they had a chance to already see this and review it and be comfortable with either one of those dates.
So go back to Mr. Coyne. Oh, go ahead.
I would say that you do it on the 23rd and make that.
The 23rd.
December 23rd?
Yes, because first going into break on New Year's Eve is chaotic, from at least from my perspective and my family. And also, it worked really well this year even too, because we got up, the 22nd was our last day. And honestly, Memorial Day, although it'd be nice to have like an extra day there, a three-day weekend is sufficient enough. And there's a lot of testing and stuff like that that you need to be in school for those other days to still, like, review topics. Probably, I would say, December 23rd.
If, if you didn't hear, just a quick summary was that the, the day before the holiday break there, it's very chaotic that time of year. So it's a nice time for, for people. And the, the three-day weekend right now is sufficient enough. And then a lot of kids are getting ready for tests and that sort of thing for the end of the year. So to be in school is, was that a good summary?
Mr. Coyne's looking at his calendar right now.
I, I like the Monday after Easter.
You say two weeks of Easter?
The Monday after.
All right, you know, just going by our student board number there, that's very, a very good explanation of how to do it. I have, I, I'm going to lean then towards the 23rd. Does that work? Option.
I'm good.
All right. I mean, we can include this based everything that we have.
Again, what we'll do is we'll bring an edited version.
All right, I'll call for a motion to accept draft action one. The extra days, the day that we have for the side, we have off being 23rd of summer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. For the discussion. All those favor accepting draft option one, please say aye.
Aye.
Those abstaining, which carries.
You know, if there's any complaints, we're sending them your way.
She will be graduating. Any other items from the business? Any public comments?
I think I missed the first part of the public comment at the beginning.
Yeah, we, it was like right before that, well, we read that presentation. I mean, we, I have no problem coming up and speaking up. That was sort of blended together with our, our presentations going on there. So if anyone does, you know.
Darren Snead, 7673 St. Joseph Road. So it's been a while since I've been here. So I've been, I've been paying attention with the online, the YouTube channel. You got my message. I see about the YouTube channel what it says. I don't know what's up. I know yesterday was working, but today is not. So I'm not sure. But what I wanted to speak about is, um, the last school board meeting that I, um, witnessed. And I kind of got frustrated by listening to some comments from, um, some of the community members and some of the board members or a board member. And I just don't, for the life of me, understand how we can have disagreement really upon diversity, equity, and, and inclusion in the district. I'm not understanding it. I mean, it's just three words, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Diversity speaks for itself, I would think, by listening to these things. Equity, it basically wants to identify, eliminate the barriers that prevented full participation of all groups within the district. I don't see anything wrong with that. I'm quite sure most of us don't see nothing but that there. Inclusion, it means individuals or groups to, into the process, activities, decision-making policies, and practices to assure equal access to opportunities and resources. It's not trying to take away from one and give to the other. What it's trying to do is making sure that everybody basically had the same type of resources to get here around the same time. I heard somebody say something about the hiring process. Right? When I read this about the hiring process, I didn't see anything in there where it says that we're just going to go out there and just look for all the minorities and hire all the minorities, and we're going to keep them. What I read that was is we're going to, you know, broaden the expansion, you know what I'm saying, to make sure we cover, you know, minorities and like-type people and try to retain it. Because, no offense, Niagara Weefield, I asked the superintendent this question sometime when we hiring new people. And the question I asked or did not ask is, how many black people we going to hire? What I did ask was how many minorities apply for that position? And he gave me an answer, sometimes zero. The thing about it is we've got to broaden the horizon, so at least track people in that looks like every student population here, whether it's minority, disabilities, ADA, gender equality type people, you know what I'm saying? Open it up. So everybody can get a chance to be here. And for the life of me, I don't understand how those three words could cause a whole lot of people to get upset. Those three words, and people getting upset, no offense to anybody here, or the same things that my mom heard in the sixties. We're in year 2022. We should not be hearing about including people. We should not be quoting what Martin Luther King said or did. Because we know that Martin Luther King also got murdered for thinking the way he thought. Right? And my last thing I'm saying, so I'm going on my three minutes, is I hope no students heard what one parent said as far as basically was talking about gender identity. What he brought up, the Bible says God created one male and one female. And if you don't believe that, you know where you're going. That person just told a large population of Niagara Weefield and any other school just out there that they going to hell because they trying to be the best they can be. I think that's sad. Now hopefully the board keeps going, listen to the, the steering committee we got going on because the steering committee is doing a lot of great things out there. If you don't believe it, look at the last presentation they had. I'm quite sure they're going to have another in the future. And if you don't believe the students feel left out, read the surveys that the students did. And see some of the comments of what they hear in school and out of school. So my opinion is keep with diversity, keep with the equity, and keep the inclusion. It can only make the school district and the community a better place. Thanks for your time.
Any other public comments? Hey, board member comments?
Just want to say congratulations to all the student athletes and the basketball championship.
Not just beating them, but twice in the season. That is, that's, that's it. That's huge. So for Kuchi, brought all the secrets over when. Any other board member comments at this time? All right, I call for a motion then to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those abstaining, which carries. We're adjourned.